Call the regular council meeting to order here at City Hall, September 18, 2018, at 7:00 PM. Ray, would you provide a blessing for us this evening?
Sure.
Thank you.
Father, we come before you again as city council, as they meet, as they seek to serve our city. We pray, Lord, that you would give them wisdom as they look at the issues, as that you would help them to make the right decisions. We also thank you, Lord, that we have our new police chief with us tonight, and, Lord, we pray for him and his staff as they continue to work, and we just ask for your protection over them. And so, Lord, tonight, as we listen to the debates that go on, we ask, Lord, that your will be done. Of course, in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Additions to the agenda, appropriation ordinance 91818, number two, the amount of $816.47. Also removing Adam Saylor and adding Jason Wyatt to the fire department. Your motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, Christie and Bryant. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie Sporo. Citizens' comments? Any citizens' comments this evening? Okay, moving on. Consent agenda approved minutes, regular council meeting, September 4, 2018. Also appropriation ordinance 91818, an amount of $17,434.51, and 91818-2, an amount of $816.47. Your motion?
So moved, second.
Motion and a second, Brian Sanders. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie Sporo. Department head and committee reports, grant administrator Lisa Cornwell. Do you have anything for her, Jamie?
I don't. The benches from whatever year the other grant was from are ordered and should be on their way.
Park benches?
Yeah. I think, was it from like 2015 or '16? They've been asking for a receipt the Grant Foundation has, so...
What?
It was a grant for benching, yeah, new benching.
Permanent ones?
Are they going in this apartment?
I think they were similar to the ones that we have right now.
Yeah, so I ordered, I think I ordered three of those steel ones that Jeff and I talked a little bit about it. So I got them ordered and they're on their way, so hopefully they'll get them installed before next summer.
Very good. Anything from council to Lisa? Getting to the on. Police department, Jim Cuday, chief Jim Cuday.
I got a few items tonight. I'll try to make it quick and sweet. First of all, I wanted to update you guys on the application process and where we're at in the hiring process. We've had one interview we did Monday. We've got another interview Saturday. That gentleman's coming all the way from Colorado. So if things go well on the interview, I would like to go ahead and do some further testing with him while he's here. It's about a four or five hour process on that test. He's agreed to take that, so that would speed up our decision if he continued to pass all the other requirements and everything. If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to add and answer that in a second. Of all, we've ordered some body cameras, car cameras. They're low here, but we believe they're going to work. This is with the sheriff's department. They're currently using some of them, and they've had limited issues with them. The only issue that we have found so far, and we're still looking into it, is the way we can pass the body cameras to our uniforms. But I think we're going to work through that pretty quick. We've got one car, the Charger, gets outfitted with a in-car camera when we're transporting it, with an audio outside the vehicle. But that's what the body cameras will take place of. We have a second camera. We're having some issues with the SD card holding in place. I'm going to reach out to the vendors hopefully this week and see if we can get a new one shipped to us on that. But for the price, we felt that that was going to be the best way to go right now. We're also, I've reached out to the U.S. Deputies Association for bulletproof vests because that's one of the high-dollar expenses for us. They're anywhere from $1,500 to $2,000 apiece. The U.S. Deputy Association has graciously given us two of those vests and also two preliminary breath tests for our patrol units and for our agency, saving the city probably roughly $2,000, $2,500 altogether. So we are in the process of getting measured for that. Once we get the measurements done and email back to them, it's about a six-week process before the vests will get back in place. I've looked at some of the cell phones that we had for the police department. We had six of them altogether, and two of them were not activated, but we were still being charged for it. I've taken steps to get those completely turned off, and where we're not being charged for those, saving us about $70 a month right now. We're looking at the hot spots that we have in the patrol cars. We had an issue with one of them. It was broke. We, I went out to replace it. The replacement unit actually came in broke. So we're relooking at that and probably just going to go with one hotspot and where we can share it throughout the whole city. Mountain itself will probably save us about $80 a month also. So we're looking, cost savings about $150 a month, cost savings that way. The next item is the patrol truck is in desperate need of tires. I reached out to Bill since I was not actually in town at the time to do it. He's reached out to three businesses in town. He got me prices. I put a proposal together, and I was just made aware that I had a typo in the proposal, and I do apologize for that. This retire came in the low bid on that, so I'm recommending going with them. If you have any questions on that, I would be glad to address those, but once again, I do apologize for the typo on that. But the last thing I've got, starting here, we, Bill and I, were looking at the current uniforms situation. They're in desperate need of being replaced. The uniforms upstairs, most of them are pattered, torn beyond repair. So what we've done for a day-to-day uniform is what Sergeant Elliott has on. A polo-type shirt with the St. John badge in gold with his name on the front. And please on the back, it will be black in color, and then the uniform pants, another like a wear. Then the other thing for special events such as parades or district court or city court, to be a little more professional-looking, I would like to purchase a, what they call a Class A uniform. Basically, that pant that we currently, both of us have on, will look similar to that. We just won't have the big side pockets here, but it'll have a stripe down the side. It'll just make it look, make us look a lot more professional in that. The shirts we're going to get are a zipper-type shirt that are matching the pants, so we will all be uniformly looking alike. And then there, again, for the day-to-day, that way we won't have three or four officers wearing three or four different uniforms and the community going, you know, which one's which. So just trying to try to mainstream it and get it cleaned up. And last, I'm still not all the way moved up here. Probably that would be a two-to-three-month process, but I do have a place for trailers, so we're working on scheduling. Right now, we will have 24/7 coverage, even just with the two of us right now. Bill and I have worked that schedule out. We're still going to use a part-time officer some, but for the most part, Bill and I will be covering the streets, so there will be law enforcement available 24/7 to the citizens. So, and like I said, our goal is to get people hired as quickly as we can, but we want to make sure we're putting the right people in place to be hired.
Any questions for Jim at this time?
I have one. You're going to be in our parades?
Which parade is that?
We have one!
Okay.
Sure.
So excited.
I can wave, so.
Very good.
No, I'm going to go to the Santa Claus, I guess.
There was a question. There was a question I wanted to ask along with Jim to counsel. As far as hiring process goes, the gentleman that's coming in from Colorado on a weekend interview, he's going to go through the interview and the testing if he passes the interview. If he passes the psychological things, Jim was wanting to be able to have the authority to have a, give a conditional offer of employment with our final approval. Is council okay with that?
I don't have a problem with that. The only other qualification that he will have, and it's not for the city, it is for Kansas law enforcement, within a year of him getting to go to KOATC, he has to pass a doctor's bill, which I don't think that would be a problem for him.
Once they, once they have to go through the academy process.
Yeah.
So...
And we can do that testing actually the first, within probably the first week or whatever that he's here, if he is selected, so.
Council's okay with a conditional offer with this candidate?
And I'm looking at a starting salary of $14 an hour for him because he is an uncertified, and that's what was advertised on the KPOA website, so I don't think we should waiver from that, so.
Which will just, final approval at the following meeting if necessary.
Yeah, I believe that next, by the next council meeting, I should be able to come to you and say yes or no.
Sure.
You know, who we recommend that.
Okay. Very good. Anything else for Jim?
I don't think so.
Anything else for us, chief?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, moving on. Fire chief Sanders report.
I talked to Michael earlier. We need to remove Adam Saylor and add Jason Wyatt to the fire department.
And we don't, we don't, yeah, I think last time you said it's volunteer, and we don't have to worry about that since that's all. Is it the wages for the volunteer?
It is just...
For the record?
It's for the record, so it's official.
Gotcha. Perfect.
Because we've run into that as far as years of service and stuff.
Need a motion.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie Sporo. Okay, moving on. City clerk Jamie Getty.
You're not as lucky as last time.
Okay.
But I'll be brief. Jen has been working hard up front with delinquent accounts. I came to you guys several months ago with the, I don't remember the company's name now off the top of my head, but it was the extra company that would take care of like the delinquent accounts and help us kind of get back some of this $12,365. It's just sitting here. I mean, it's to, do you guys want us to do something with it? Do you want us to try to hire someone? John has offered his services per hour, I believe you said.
Well, it'd be the, for some of that stuff, it's paid by the defendant, up to, I think it's like 33% or something.
Yeah, 33%.
The outstanding balance. And so instead of charging, now I can't remember what that other contract said, whether it said 30% or 33%, instead of charging that, we would just do it by the hour, so if it ends up being 25% of the bill and that's all they have to pay in our fees, then that's just the way we would do it. It would probably require our office to contract with the city for doing that, something like that. But I will say, I don't know how, what these guys do. I'm really not wanting to hide in bushes and that kind of thing, so if...
Well, and that's what that company does. Like they, I mean, anyone, I, I mean, we can do this. I mean, I think from my understanding, you just pester until they give you your money.
You can file, you can file a limited action case. City can file cases for free in the district court. If they have jobs, then we can garnish their wages. Otherwise, your only option is to wait through the set-off program in hopes that they have state tax return. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't.
Are any of these set up and making payments on them?
No, these are all like...
Usually they're people that have moved.
You're saying we've been stuck with them forever and no one's paying them? They're not set on paying or anything? They're not?
Yeah, there's a couple back from...
Are they current customers?
2008. There are several deceased, and then there's a bunch with no social security or driver's license. And that was part of the reason that we sent out that form that everyone got irritated about with the information of the driver's license or social security numbers, because we end up with this. We were updating our records to be more efficient in what we're doing, not trying to make everyone mad. But there's like five or six, there's six of them here that are deceased, which is just a little over $1,000. There's one, she's still in town, but I don't think she has services in her name, but we assessed it to the property, but I'm assuming that's not being paid either. But that's an assumption, and I guess we will still do that, so.
It's difficult work, and you have to, it's, you make your money by handling the budget cases. And so, collection attorneys, all they usually do is collection work, and they handle thousands of cases at a time. But that's the only way, because you're going to get very little of that $12,000. My suggestion is, is to re-review the contract and just, just go with it because they're going to spend hours doing something for very little return.
I mean, that's the thing. Are we better off to write these off and be done with them?
It doesn't cost you anything to just turn over this collection agency. You don't lose, the money that they, that they collect, or the people that they find are going to pay their bills.
Yeah, because if you just write it off, we won't get nothing, but if we give it to somebody, we'll at least get a percentage of the...
Because we don't, like, we don't pay them unless they get money back, and then the money back pays their bills, is that?
They, so...
They take a percentage of what's owed to us.
Right.
Right off the top.
Those people pay, the defendants pay that amount. That's why you hear stories about, and some cities don't do it because they think it's egregious. You hear stories about people having a $100 electric bill turns into a $300 electric bill because now they're paying the collection company, the collection agency. But it's the only way for the cities to recoup this without spending a bunch of money, so the legislature allows them to do it. Same with municipal court fines, same with restitution.
We're getting nowhere with it. Might as well look into it.
If it don't cost us anything.
If it don't cost us anything.
We're going to get a percentage.
I could call Chad tomorrow and just double-check everything and...
Have somebody through the agency.
That's what I'd do.
Been calling me for six months.
I don't know, I've been missing this report.
Um, I went through...
Now, if it's assessed to the property taxes, though, can you still turn them over to a collection?
You can't do utilities on property taxes, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's not the same as a mortgage.
But that may not...
That might have been like...
That might be...
These are going to be renters for the most part. And a lot of times, what happens is when one party gets a bill, the roommate then signs the next lease, signs up for the next round of utilities.
I just, if it don't cost us anything, take care of it.
Consensus to go for?
Yes.
No cons? Okay.
Let's double-check. I just sent it to you.
Who else, Jim?
Um, the skating rink manager. I had one applicant, Sharon Walker. She lives over in Hudson. They did it last year. It was, they, it's kind of her and the Girl Scouts. They were raising money to go on a trip, which I believe that they took. They went.
They went to Europe, visited several different countries while they were over there. I don't know where they came.
So that was nice, and they helped us out a lot with like all of our events and stuff like that, so. If it's okay with you guys, we want to move forward in that. I'm going to have to sit down with her a little bit and just kind of go over some of the complaints that we've had throughout the year and just make sure that everything is lined out the way it needs to be a little bit better, I think. So before, and that all happened before it's official and all of that, but, I mean, she was the, the one who stepped up.
The only applicant.
Yeah, so I think just having it, maybe a sit-down, because there were a few concerns raised to me about some of the stuff that was going on and how things were handled, so.
I'm fine with that. When are they supposed to open?
I think once, the carpets, the carpet cleaners are supposed to be here for both buildings Friday, and then I think they can open anytime. I think they, I, I was under the impression they shot for October, but everyone keeps telling me like right when school starts, so I'm not sure. I shoot for October, October to May in my eyes. And for the next month and a half, you guys are going to hear about the Fall Festival because that's the new event coming, so we're having a carnival and a meal and a movie.
Is it carnival?
Carnival, yeah. Not like rides carnival, but like fun games. So if anyone wants to volunteer their time, I'm sure we could put you down on a volunteer list to mainly a couple stations. And I think we have one more movie to show. I'm not sure how we're going to do that. I need to talk to the company and see if we can transfer it to next year because it's getting cold, so. We'll see where we are with that.
When is that due?
Uh-huh. It's the Saturday before Halloween, which is the 27th. And I think the people that put on trunk-or-treat are going to be doing that again as well for Halloween. We're going to, we're going to have our own theme. If you guys want to be added into it, we can create a citywide thing. No? Okay.
As far as, what, on Halloween?
Yeah.
Think I'll probably scare you enough.
Okay. I think that's it.
Anything for Jamie? Anything else, Jamie? City superintendent Jeff Williams' son.
I don't really have anything at this point, maybe not till the end of the evening, so. What's the word on our truck? It's in the shop. They called me, when did they call me, Cody? Monday?
It was Monday, yeah.
And they said, "Well, we'd like to know about battery backup to shift the bucket on the truck." And I said, "Well, you know, I don't know. We've never had to use it." So I went up and looked at it, and I said, "You know, here's the lever to change it, but there's a ritual in order to do it by battery, and one of them is that the outriggers must be down on the truck, and they have to be past the safety point of non-tipping." And, and I assumed that those guys had done three or four trucks, that they kind of knew that. But then he called me back the next day, and he said, "Well, we can't get it to turn." And so I gave him the, the Altech guy's phone number in St. Joe, and I said, "Just call him." So. It's still there. It's got a new motor on the floor, but other than that, I can't tell you. I really can't.
They figured out what, last meeting you said something about they were going to look in and make sure.
Yeah, he said, "Boy, it is rattling hard," and I said, "That's what I told you." So that's where we're at. There's a new motor setting on the floor, but when I went up last Thursday, I asked him, I said, "Is there a reason why you're not working on my truck? It's setting in here." And he said, "Well, the guy that works on our six fours is gone today and tomorrow, so he'll start on another." Okay. Can't argue with the dealer, so.
Okay.
If I can get loose, I'll try and get up there in the next couple of days and check on him, so. See where we're at. We'd like to have it back too, believe me, so. Anyway.
I see the surveyor out today.
He is out today. I was going to bring that up in old business, but yeah. He called me and said that they would be on West Street this morning, and then when they got done, they'd move out to Phil, so. I did not get a chance to talk to him, but yeah, they're here.
Okay, moving on. City attorney John Beverlin.
I don't have anything. Sorry it's late. They're moving link turbines down 211. That's backup traffic. They want to take right on 50.
Anything for John?
I might have some. Jim keeps rewriting this letter to send to the state. He's rewritten it a couple times. John had drafted us a letter, and then Jim decided to write this one. So I don't know if you guys want me to see if John wants to go over Jim's again or what direction you guys would like me to take or direct Jim into...
It's the same thing. It's probably going to achieve the same result with your letter.
Yeah, but it's on behalf of the city, I would say, before it gets sent, that John used to look at it.
Yeah. If he's changed, I looked at the last one.
Well, he did. He did. He added a sentence.
A sentence?
Well, that right there. I mean, it's... I don't know. I mean, I, I need to know what direction council as a whole wants me to move in because it's, it's... How do I put this politely?
Requiring a lot of time.
It's requiring a lot of time, and it's one person coming into my office. It's not council as a whole saying... You know, you get what I'm saying here?
I've brought it up a couple of times, and at some point, we need to know where to draw the line as far as the time and money that we're putting into it.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of, a lot of the people being hired to handle the situation. I think basically we just need to inform whoever it is that we're concerned about it, you know? I wouldn't waste a whole bunch of time. It's very important, but there's a lot of people working on diligent.
And I mean, we haven't spent, I'm more worried about John spending on, I mean...
But I haven't done anything since I drafted my letter.
Yeah.
The only, the only difference is that when this was initially started, I thought the purpose was to inform a reader about St. John, the work you guys are doing, the concern you have.
So you have...
Population, I mean, I had numbers and statistics that Carolyn had, needed, had filled in somewhat that we had to finish filling in, but I guess I'm then after reading this kind of lost what the intent was.
Yeah, because this, this has turned into supporting argumentation, argumentation.
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 Which, which is fine. Mine said that also, but mine said, "Why?"
Yeah. This basically, I mean, it's saying, "We don't agree with you."
I thought you guys were going to meet on this. Did you meet on this?
I was gone that night.
Was mine understanding there was going to be a meeting?
Yeah, there was a committee. Wasn't there a committee that night? You guys formed a committee that was supposed to...
Were you here, Jamie?
Oh, yeah, we met here.
Yeah. Where's the plug, sir?
Yes, they come after the fact.
Yeah.
But like I said, I was not at that meeting. I was in Kansas.
We had the two reps, Jim, Josh Meyer, myself, and Jamie.
And basically, in the meeting, or in, you know, we talked about informing the residents and stuff like that, but it's not even to that point.
Hey, you got to 2045.
You know, you don't want to go causing a big stir and, and saying, "Everyone go write a letter to the state," and, I mean, that's not to the point it's at. And he said, I, not that it's not affecting the city or can affect the city, but... And I don't want to say cities aren't involved in it, but municipalities...
It's a long ways off from affecting the...
Municipalities are, are far off on the percentage-wise of it.
There, there are things that the city's going to have to do. You're going to have to put in some kind of policies and processes to stop leaks quicker, and, and I don't know what it's going to affect your uses. The big thing is, when I'm dealing with this...
The big thing is, and I'm dealing with this in another community, is a developer wants to come in and buy a bunch of water, you probably scare off any further development, economic development, anybody that's going to use water. But, but that's, I mean, that's just because of where you're located. The augmentation process took water from outside of the area, ran it, I don't know how far, and literally dumped it into a creek. But it seems to be an afterthought when you read the plan. And I think that's what he's trying to say here, but, I mean, I sent Jim two emails on this, because I had a question about another thing, and he never got back to me, so.
I guess I would like to have, you know, hear from Jim on what he, what his letter is about, maybe.
And I haven't seen him since the first draft came out, really.
I haven't seen him yet.
It's concerned, but I don't, I don't know how involved the city really is to.
Yep.
I will say, I personally went thin this federally, that your ears are going to be at the state level, and Kansas is probably more, I mean, all politics are local, and your local rep and your local senator are probably the best advocate on stuff like this, because from personal experience, this isn't going to be read by Secretary Zinke. It may not be read by the governor. It may be read by the Secretary of Agriculture in Kansas, but it's going to be read by staffers. That's just how it works.
When you guys were doing all this research, did you guys got ahold of our representative in Luttrell?
Oh, Greg Lewis knows about it, because he's got property involved in it. He's been to just about every meeting. I, I've talked to him about, about this from both this perspective and Pratt's perspective too. Pratt's kind of, Pratt has a different issue.
Okay. I'd say just wait off till the next meeting that Jim's here.
He wants to move meeting time just a little bit.
No, no, the meeting time is fine the way it is.
I believe, I heard a couple of people say at one time that it's been this way for a hundred years and needs to stay that way for a hundred years. Anyway, thanks for the update, Jamie. Okay. All right, nothing else for John. Move on to me. I have nothing to report. Vacation was great, that's about it. Old business, moving on. We talked about road survey. Anything else to talk about there, Jeff?
I don't think so.
Guys? Okay. We've gone to dumpster?
Nope.
Nothing to talk about there?
Table.
Just forget about it for a couple of years?
I heard from a few more that it was a great idea, so, you know, I don't.
Keep that old business?
What was the result of the poll on the dumpster?
It was favored in yes.
Very good, okay.
I've not heard any more negative comments on it.
I've heard a few.
I stopped talking to everyone.
Okay, moving on now, new business. Go on to executive session, five minutes to discuss personnel matters and non-elected personnel to include?
Counsel, mayor, clerk, attorney, Cody and myself.
Okay. Do I have more motions?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's four oh. We'll reconvene at seven thirty-nine.
How's it going, Bill?
Pretty good, yourself?
Call the meeting back over at seven thirty-nine. Counsel?
I would go ahead and make a motion to approve that Cody Hoy is allowed to still reside in the city of Pratt and work for the city of St. John. Second that.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion?
And the, the exception is based on his position and difficulty in hiring.
Right. Position and difficulty in hiring alignment during.
All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's three oh.
Thank you very much.
One other business I'd entertain, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Brian, I see us. All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's four oh. Immediate adjournment.
Yep, yep, set the record.
Forty minutes.
Forty-five.